Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call to order our September fourteenth, two thousand nine Planning Commission meeting. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Town?
Will the senior recording secretary please call the role this evening?
Commissioner Adam?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Grumney?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Chair Lun?
Here.
And now is the time for public comments. I do not have a public comment card. Is there anybody here for public comments tonight? It's for items that would fall under the purview of the commission but not on the agenda for this evening. Very well. And we'll go to written comments, announcements, and continuances. Mr. Town.
Thank you, Chair Lun. We do not have a supplemental packet today, but we do have a letter which was provided to the commission and to staff from a Mr. Charles Melber with regard to case six C, the area housing authority. And everybody should have a copy of that. And that's all we had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. The secretary please call six A, please.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item six A, case MCA two thousand eight seven zero four seven one. Applicant: City of Thousand Oaks. Request: Municipal Code Amendment establishing tree pruning standards and monitoring review procedure for parking area landscape. Location: Citywide.
Thank you. We're in the esteemed company of Mr. Jeff Ware this evening, and he has got the staff report for us. Good evening, sir.
My big return to the Planning Commission here after many years of absence. Okay. Good evening, Chair Lun and Planning Commissioners. Tonight before you is MCA two thousand eight seven oh four seven one regarding tree pruning and miscellaneous changes to the parking ordinance relative to parking lot landscaping. Tonight's request is to review the ordinance recommendations to the city council. This item is not defined as a project under CEQA and therefore does not require any environmental Before getting into the amendment, I would like to publicly thank our task force members that came up with these recommendations tonight. They are Frank Anino, Tom Cohen, James Dean, Ron Everett, Rick Lemo, Joaquin Lopez, Lee Newman, John Chichenian, and Dave Tuttle. Mr. Tuttle is here this evening representing the Landscape Maintenance Guidelines Task Force and will make some comments on their behalf. Also on the task force were city staff members John Shepard, Ed Rinkie, and George Moore. Based on the comments received from the public, the city manager directed staff to perform a task force to review matters related to the maintenance of landscape. The comments received were about cities' landscape maintenance regulations and how these requirements are communicated to needed parties. Task force met between April and September two thousand eight to discuss these issues. Discussions ranged from the difficulties in determining city policies related to landscape, difficulties in design standards leading to long-term maintenance, and particularly the need to better communicate the city's standards to the public. Based on the discussions, three recommendations were developed. One, adopt a tree pruning ordinance into the municipal code. Two, consolidate resolutions containing policies and standards for landscaping into a single document. And three, provide education to the public on the city's policies and procedures relating to landscape. The task force recommendations were forwarded to the city council, and the council initiated this amendment on November eighteenth, two thousand eight, and referred it to the Planning Tonight before you is the proposed tree pruning ordinance as proposed in part two of the ordinance this evening, and the initial steps in consolidation and cleanup of some of the landscape procedures as shown in part three. Currently maintained standards for trees are briefly mentioned in resolutions and heavily rely on industry standards not contained in city documents. The proposed tree pruning ordinance would adopt current industry standards and existing city practice into the municipal code. This includes limitations on crown reduction, use of spikes for climbing trees, and tree topping. This is in addition to requirements under our city's oak and landmark tree ordinances. One exception proposed by the task force is to allow pruning in excess of the industry standard of twenty-five percent of the crown or foliage by permit based on justification of the need to perform such pruning. These permits are meant to be quickly processed through the evaluation of the request based on the need and potential benefit to the tree. The tree pruning ordinance would apply to development projects that as part of the approval process were required to have landscape plans submitted and approved by the city. These projects are mostly commercial and industrial projects. It also includes residential projects that have a common area and requirements for landscape areas such as manufactured slopes or fuel modification areas. Other than the mentioned residential areas noted, it would not apply to general single-family residential zones or other projects in which landscape plans have not been imposed as a development requirement. The changes as shown in part three of the proposed ordinance primarily delete application processing portions of the municipal code that are either covered in resolutions or application requirements and are not appropriate to be in the municipal code. There's only one minor change to a requirement, which is the raising of a landscape strip along property lines from two and a half, a maximum of two and a half feet to three feet to remain consistent with a prior change in the code relative to hedge heights in front yards and current city practice. This change is in section nine dash four point two four zero four sub E sub two for For general information for the Planning Commission, the second recommendation of the task force relative to consolidation of landscape standards in the single resolution will be scheduled for a future commission hearing later this year for review. After finalization of the city's changes to the ordinance and resolutions, a significant education program will be prepared to educate interested community members of the city's Staff recommends the Plan Commission recommend approval of MCA two thousand eight seven zero four seven one to the city council. Staff is available for questions, including myself. Mr. George Moore is here, and I believe also, as I said earlier, Mr. Tuttle will be having some comments on behalf of the task force.
Thank you, Mr. Ware. Questions, Mr. Ware? Commissioner Adam?
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Ware. I just want to clarify something as far as the placement of the proposed ordinance. I know that in section five, it goes up to chapter twenty-six, and we're recommending that we add chapter twenty-seven. So that flows, tree pruning, chapter twenty-seven. The second part where we're going to amend nine dash four dot twenty-four oh four, it says in the beginning here, we're going to amend chapter twenty-four of title five. But aren't, I mean, maybe I read things wrong, but aren't we amending article twenty-four of title nine? I don't know, you probably don't have the municipal code in front of you, but I mean, it's a small thing, but I-
On the draft, what page are you looking at?
I'm looking, oh, I beg your pardon, I'm looking on attachment number one, page four, on the ordinance number in the first paragraph. Like I said, I understand we're adding chapter twenty-seven to title five. But the second part, the amendment, I may be mistaken, but I think we're amending article, where it says amending chapter twenty-four of title five? The way I read it, we're amending article twenty-four of title nine.
I'm sorry, you're in the title. You are correct. We will correct that.
Okay. All right. So it's article twenty-four.
I was looking at a different page. It should be chapter twenty-four of title nine. You are correct.
Or article twenty-four.
Article twenty-four, right.
Title nine. Okay. All right. It's just a small point, but-
No, thank you for that correction.
Okay. The other thing would be, on the page seven, maybe you could just help me with this, that the, we're going to strike some language in number one there and then add some new language. Just in a nutshell, what's the difference between the language we're striking and the language we're adding? I mean, I read that there are a couple of-
There's no difference. It was written because there was a belief that the language existing was a little confusing, so it's just rewording of the language there. It doesn't change any of the standards. It just basically rewords it into something a little more clear. So if you read it and couldn't find the difference, that's why.
That's what it was. I read the two, I thought, wait a minute, they sound exactly the same. So, all right, so the first one just has a little more clarity-
Correct.
-than the way it was written in the code. Okay. That's good. And just one, two other quick things here. On the next page, page eight, we're striking number eight. Plant material of a drought tolerant nature shall be used to the greatest extent possible in any parking area landscape design and planning. Why would we strike that?
We're striking it because that's already contained in our landscape design resolutions. So it's repetitive being in the code, and because it's a design standard, it's being, there are similar statements already in our resolutions that exist today. So it's just repetitive, and it's more appropriate to be in the design standards than it is the code.
All right. I guess we're committed to drought tolerant-
We are committed, and the existing resolutions have that same commitment in them. So it's just basically, we had numerous areas that were discussing the same thing, worded differently, so we chose the design criteria that's in our resolutions. That's really a more appropriate place for it.
Okay, got it. And just one other quick thing, and this is just for the record. Oops. Does this proposed ordinance in any way supersede our oak tree ordinance or our landmark tree ordinance in any shape or form?
No, it does. This would run sort of beside both those ordinances. Both the oak tree and the landmark tree ordinance will still be in full effect, requiring different type of permitting procedures for pruning of those trees. This wouldn't affect those at all. This would affect other trees in planned developments that have landscape plans except for oak tree and landmark trees, because those are regulated by those two other sections of title.
Except for ordinance, okay. So no effect on that whatsoever?
It has no effect on those two ordinances at all.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Ware.
Thank you, Commissioner Adam. Commissioner Reynolds?
Good evening, Mr. Ware. You mentioned in your presentation about increasing the height of a hedge. Is this in parking lots only, or is this throughout the city?
Actually, for places other than these landscape plans, hedge heights were actually already increased through previous amendment, probably about three, four years ago. So that height is already at three, actually, it's at, yeah, three feet already. So this is just bringing this standard in line with the standard that was already adopted for other areas. So yes, it's a change here, but it's already consistent with other areas of the code.
And there's no concern about the side distance or whatever, raising it even those six inches?
No. My understanding is even the public works standards are actually a little higher than this already, but this doesn't create a problem there. This has already been looked at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. I have a question in regards to single-family residences which you touched upon. In an RPD zone, and there's a requirement by the CCNRs for landscape plans, does the city, will the city have overview with this particular ordinance change in this case?
This would not necessarily affect any private CCNRs where individual landscape review is required by that particular body. If it involves a landscape plan that the city has approved, which doesn't necessarily, isn't necessarily a match all the time, sometimes there's different requirements by CCNRs that the city does not have, that would be more restrictive. But unless there's a city-approved landscape plan, this would only, this ordinance would only apply to landscape plans issued by the city, not by individual CCNRs.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Any further questions from the dyes? Thank you very much. We'll go to our first speaker this evening, and Mr. Dave Tuttle. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and your city of residence for the record, and you will have five minutes.
For Thousand Oaks, representing Canale County Landscape. I'd like to go back a little bit for clarity of why we're at this point, maybe just to put a little history on this. Some time ago, our company, I'm a landscaper, was, had some, the differences over some tree pruning in the city. And we worked with Mayor Irwin at the time, and the city planning, or, excuse me, the, met with the city and did a PowerPoint presentation of the different types of pruning that were going on in the city at the time. And there was a wide range and wide interpretation of how things should be pruned and what should be pruned, and what the standards were. And out of that meeting with the city manager and members of the city came a recommendation to establish this committee. And out of the committee, I think, have come some, a lot of thought and some good recommendations. So that's kind of the history of what, why we're at this point today. The committee had a number of people on it. I mean, it was a diversified committee. There were a number of landscapers, there were several architects, there were the city represented, and there were some building owners, and there was a developing attorney. So there was a wide range of input into this, into this, under these recommendations. Out of that came a need for clear guidelines as to what expectations were and what we should do. And also the need to more, to educate the community as terms of what was expected and what the guidelines were. I think that this is a major, major problem that we encountered, is people really don't know what to do. They don't know about, you're not going to trim this sycamore tree, is it a landmark tree? Can I trim this Brazilian pepper? Can I cut the tree down for visibility for the corridor? How do I climb the tree? Can I use spikes? I can't use spikes. So we wanted clarification, and there were some, there were some interesting moments. There were some disagreements, but we came up, I think, with some guidelines that are pretty clear. I think what I'm here to recommend this evening is that this is a good start, and it's something that's really needed. If you look around even today, you'll see that we're still having issues with pruning and what's going on, whether, you know, different kinds of pruning. We're having trees that are top still, trees that are bald and shake. We're having areas still where people want visibility, and there's a tremendous amount of pressure with the economy down for visibility and signage, and we're seeing things still cut down. So we need consistency in what we're doing. We need to educate the community, and I'm recommending at this point that the council, I mean, the Planning Commission at this point approve, excuse me, the recommendations that Mr. Ware has worked so diligently on with this committee.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Okay. Well, we'll go back to you, Mr. Ware.
I have no additional comments unless there's additional questions.
Questions of Mr. Ware? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ware. We'll close the public hearing, and we'll go to commission comments and/or motion. Commissioner Adam?
Yes, thank you. Well, as our speaker just mentioned, I do appreciate the clarity that I hope that this will bring. I think the staff report summed it up best when it says this ordinance will enhance the city's ability to protect trees from excessive and improper pruning. And I know we've all seen excessive and improper pruning in the city. I, just as an example, there's some redwoods I'm familiar with where the owner decided to top them. And once you top a tree, it's never the same. It is never the same. And it says right here, "It shall be unlawful to prune a tree that results in topping." Well, that's pretty clear. So I appreciate that clarity, and I would move that we recommend to the city council that they approve this tree pruning ordinance and the amending standards related to landscaping in parking lots. Yeah, with that minor correction that we make the ordinance read, amending article twenty-four of title nine.
Comments to the motion? Please vote.
Motion passed, five zero.
Okay. Will the secretary please call case six B?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item case six B, case SUMJ two thousand nine seven oh two five seven. Applicant: Belmont Village. Request: To allow modification of the building involving reduction in building size, addition of eight units, and replacement of underground parking structure with surface parking. Location: East side of Moore Park Road and Olson Road.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rinkie, you have the staff report this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Lun and members of the commission. As Lily has stated, the request is to modify the approved assisted living facility. And to reduce the building size, replace the parking structure with surface parking and add it eight units. Here's an aerial photograph of the site. It's on Moore Park Road, east side, north of Olson Road, across from the Church of Latter-day Here's a view of the site on Moore Park Road looking southeast. And a view from the church looking towards the center of the site. And the view from the church looking northeast. The site is five point zero acres in size. It's owned PL, which is a public, quasi-public and institutional lands and facilities zone. In March of this year, the commission approved one hundred thirty-one unit senior assisted living facility at the subject site. The project design, it's to increase the units from one hundred thirty-one to one hundred thirty-nine units, to reduce the building size from one hundred five thousand one hundred forty to one hundred two thousand eight hundred twenty-five square feet. The underground parking structure has been replaced with surface parking, and there are thirty-five parking spaces required on the site, and there are sixty-three provided. The swimming pool, which was located in the front of the building, has been eliminated. The building pad elevation is, remains as previously approved. And the proposed revised design, it requires less grading export. There's six thousand three hundred twenty-one fewer cubic yards, and that equates to four hundred fifty-one fewer truck trips. Here's a colored site plan showing the revised plan, and all of the surface parking has been relocated in, to the front of the building. The building has a contemporary Mediterranean architecture, and it has the same overall design that was previously approved. The northern and southern portions of the building facing Moore Park Road, they still maintain the two-story appearance, and the average height remains the same. The length of the building has been reduced by approximately fifty feet. The width of the building has been reduced by about twenty feet. And the front yard setback has been increased by seventeen feet, and the side yard setbacks have been increased by about twenty feet. The overall building coverage has been reduced from twenty-one percent down to eighteen And here's a view of the front elevation facing Moore Park Road. And the north and south building elevations. And here's the proposed view looking northeast from Moore Park Road. And the proposed view looking southeast from Greenridge Street. For the environmental review, an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration number two sixty-seven was prepared for the project. And the project redesign does not introduce any new environmental impacts or involve any new mitigation measures not discussed in the previous MND. The applicant has agreed to the mitigation measures as required by CEQA. And staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt addendum to the mitigated negative declaration number two sixty-seven and approve the special use permit, major mod, two thousand nine seven oh two five seven, based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. And staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rinkie. Questions for the, Mr. Rinkie? Commissioner Reynolds?
Good evening, Mr. Rinkie. You mentioned that the side yard, the front yard setbacks have increased. Have they asked, has this caused a need for any variances?
No.
Okay, so they're still within?
Yes, they exceed all of the setbacks.
Okay, thank you. That was all.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. We will call our first speaker tonight, Mr. Doug Lazard. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and your city of residence. For the record, you have fifteen minutes.
Thank you. My name is Doug Lazard. I'm with Belmont Village, and I live in Santa Clarita, California. Chairman Lun, members of the commission, thank you for your time this evening. Do you have my presentation? You can turn to the next slide. I'll just give you a quick refresher of who Belmont Village is and what we do, and tell you the reasons for the modification. Belmont is a twelve-year-old, fully-integrated developer, owner, and operator of senior communities across the country. We have twenty communities now across the country, about twenty-seven hundred units. Half of our properties are here in California. We just recently completed two developments this year, one in Cardiff by the Sea, which is north San Diego County. And then our second property, we just opened in July in Westwood, California. Some noteworthy affiliations, we have an affiliation with UCLA. Our Westwood project was actually designed for retired professors of UCLA and alumni. It's more of a marketing relationship, so we're proud to be affiliated with UCLA. And we're also affiliated now with the NFL. The NFL has a preferred provider program for the players' benefit program. For the older players that need assisted living or senior housing, they will refer to a select few providers, and we are one of those providers. Just a quick overview on assisted living. We are licensed by the state. We're licensed by the Department of Social Services as a residential care facility for the elderly. We will provide assisted living services as well as Alzheimer's, dementia services. Average age of our resident is eighty-five years old, a frail seniors who may need assistance with activities of daily living. We'll provide three meals a day in our restaurant, social learning activities, transportation. We have twenty-four-hour care staff to assist our residents. We have a full-time RN on staff as well as licensed nurses twenty-four hours a day to provide medication management and supervised staff. Our Alzheimer's area will be secured. There'll be a separate outdoor space, which is also secured, approximately thirty-four units. They'll have their own dining room. The doors will all be secured with the Lady Grace hardware. We also have a program called our Circle of Friends program, which is for early stages of Alzheimer's, which kind of bridges the gap between assisted living and folks that needed to be in a secured Alzheimer's area. needed to be in a secured Alzheimer's area. The type of construction will be a commercial-grade construction. It'll be concrete and steel, which will allow us to have non-ambulatory residents throughout the building. Residents who may depend on a wheelchair, a walker, residents who have dementia diagnosis, they're considered non-ambulatory by the state. But because of our construction type, they can live anywhere in the building. Reasons for the modification, we were, as Ed said, we were approved back in March of this year. Two key reasons. The underground parking garage for 49 spaces became cost prohibitive when we went through the numbers again. We also took a look at the unit mix of our building and adjusted it based upon, primarily because of the economy. We have about nine different floor plans, a variety of studio-style apartments, and then larger one-bedroom apartments. In this building, the way it was originally designed is there were more larger one-bedroom building, one-bedroom units. And what we did is we took a few of those, we reconfigured them and created smaller studio. Because we've noticed that there is a larger demand for the smallest studio-style apartments, which have the lowest price. So overall, our building is smaller and we have less rentable square footage. But we have a few more units, eight more units, because they're smaller. They're smaller units. And also, we noticed there's a greater need for dementia care, so that we've added a couple more units to our dementia area. Across the country, at pretty much all of our communities, our dementia area is full and in many places with a waitlist. Once we redesigned the building, it has a smaller footprint. It allowed us to put the parking on grade. And I'll touch on this in the next slide as well. So the project is visually smaller and it's a more efficient design. We have done some outreach. I've had phone conversations and I have personally met with two key neighbors, Mr. Severance, who lives above our site, and also Frank Schibell, who lives across the street. And Frank, I gave Frank copies of our photographs here, our photo renderings and the site plan, so that he could also talk to some of his neighbors. Both neighbors were supportive of the changes. The only concern was Frank wanted to ensure that the guardrail study would still happen, which was a condition of our original approvals. Modified site plan, as I said, it's a smaller footprint, which allowed for surface parking. The building is 50 feet shorter. You know, on each side it's shorter. It allowed us to put the parking along the front of the building. And we removed the pool, which was a little courtyard on the south end. We replaced it with a small courtyard and it also allowed room for parking on that side of the building. The building is 28 feet shorter on the north end and it's 22 feet shorter on the south end. And it's actually set back an additional 12 feet from the original approval. If you look at this, this slide here, the white is the new building. The green areas are the old buildings that no longer exist, that have been shaved off of the footprint. Quick summary of changes, number of parking spaces. Previously, we had 62, 66, which included 17, which were in front of the building, and 49 underground. We now have 63 spaces, all on surface, and it still exceeds the minimum requirement of the city. Smaller building square footage overall. Previous project was 105. We're now at 102, 825. Smaller footprint, a little over 45,813. We're now just under 39,000 square feet. Unit mix, 131 units. Under the previous approval, we're now at 139. But again, it's less, it's even less square footage, less square footage. We just have carved them up into smaller units. And there's overall less export off the site. Previously, there was almost 30,000 cubic yards. We're now under 24,000 cubic yards. I'd like to turn over the remainder of my time over to Mark Sellers. Our attorney will say a few words. Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mark Sellers, Jackson Demarco Law Firm. I'm going to make my comments very brief. I think the economy is affecting just about every project and most of the projects, it simply means they won't be built, even with changes and modifications. This is one of the few projects that you have an operator that has done a very good perform, looked at with these, what I think are modifications that actually improve the project. Most people don't like parking structures. You've increased setbacks, you've reduced the size of the building. So you look at the modifications, you actually end up with a better project. And I simply want to say that I think this is a perfect project for this site. At a PL zoning, this site's not going to be a fire station, this site's not going to be a hospital, this site has no other reasonable use. It will remain a collection for unneeded furniture, abandoned cars, et cetera. It's already graded. So I see this as a great opportunity to, to improve the image of that piece of property. Like the foredirectors say, we accept the conditions. And with that, we can answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Sellers or Mr. Lazard from the dice? Thank you very much. We have some other speakers here for questions only, correct? No questions. All right. Well, we'll go back to Mr. Rinkie.
I have no additional comments.
Very well. Well, I guess we'll close the, you rebuttal? No reason for rebuttal, we know he's asking questions. Do you have a question, Commissioner Reynolds? Okay. We're going to close the public hearing and go to Commission comments and the motion. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, I think what they're asking for is definitely reasonable, less grading, 450 fewer truck trips, the building size 21% to 18% coverage. It is a beautiful project and I think it is a great project, especially for that site. So I would like to move that the Commission adopt the addendum to negative declaration number two sixty-seven. Move approval of SUMJ two thousand nine dash seven oh two five seven, subject to the suggested conditions and based on the findings in our staff report.
Comments to the motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. And I will support the motion. I'm very pleased to see the reduction. And the biggest thing to me is the additional parking. It's usually very difficult to find a place to park at any of the assisted living places. And as I know, the families really like to visit and it's nice that people will not have to go searching all over our park and other areas. And also, not only are there is a reduction of 450 truck trips, that's one way. So it's really a reduction of 900 trucks. If you, because they have to come in and they also then have to go out. So it's really 900 then. So I'm looking forward to the project.
For the comments? Yes, Commissioner Adam?
Only that I'm glad to see Belmont went back and reevaluated the project and, from an economic standpoint, I mean, we want to see the project built, but we also want it to be successful. And by reevaluation, hopefully that'll add to the potential for success. So that's good.
Thank you, Commissioner Adam. You were, you obviously cheated and looked at my notes this evening, haven't you? Any further comments or stolen items from the chair? Commissioner Fisher, please vote.
Motion passed, five zero.
There's a 10-day appeal period. Thank you very much. Will the Secretary please call case six C?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item six C regarding case Z two thousand eight seven oh six three one, RPD two thousand nine seven oh one seven two, PMW two thousand nine seven oh one seven three, and OTP two thousand nine seven oh one seven four. Applicant, Area Housing Authority, request to consider mitigated negative declaration number two seven three and mitigation monitoring plan to change the zoning from RPD fifteen U and RPD twenty U to RPD thirty U on 2.2 acres of land. To allow construction of a 60-unit multifamily affordable housing project consisting of 10 buildings, a community building, and a subterranean parking structure. To allow the merger of five parcels into one lot and to allow the encroachment within the protected zone of one oak tree. Location, 1972, 1990, 1994, 2020, and 2026, Las Feliz Drive.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alawami et al., you have the staff report tonight. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission. I'd like to direct your attention to the screen for staff's presentation. As mentioned, applicant, Area Housing Authority, is requesting to construct 16-unit multifamily affordable housing project located at 1972 through 2026 Las Feliz Drive. The requested applications are zone change application to change the zoning, the current zoning from residential plan development 15 units per acre and, 15 units per acre and residential plan development 20 units per acre to residential plan development 30 units per acre. The residential plan development application is to construct a 60-unit affordable, family affordable housing project, which include 10 buildings, subterranean parking structure, and a community building. The parcel map waiver application is to merge five lots into one parcel of record. The oak tree permit application is to allow the encroachment within the protected zone of one oak tree. And the applicant also requesting that to defer certain city development impact fees until final occupancy of the project. This shows the location of the project along Las Feliz Drive. And here is a view of the site looking south, on the south side across Las Feliz Drive. Background information on the project, the property contains five parcels totaling 2.2 acres in size with the system of Thousand Oaks Development Agency. Area Housing Authority bought the site in 2006 and then, I think, two or three parcels in 2006. The remaining parcel is 2007. The City Council authorized concurrent processing of the entitlements, entitlement application with the zone change request. Area Housing Authority conducted two outreach meetings and based on the comments at those meetings, Area Housing Authority modified project design, including added the evergreen trees on the south side of the project and along the perimeter of the project. The planning commission's role tonight is to make recommendations to the council on the entitlement as well as legislative action because of the concurrent processing that was authorized by the city council. And the city council will take final action on the project, which is a tentative hearing scheduled for November 3rd, 2009. The zone change application, again, the site has two zoning classifications. One is RPD 15 units on two parcels and RPD 20 units on the remaining three parcels. The requested zone change tonight is to change both of these designation to RPD 30 units on all parcels, on the entire site. The proposed zone change is consistent with the general plan land use designation, which is high-density residential. The site is identified in the city's housing element to help meet the city's affordable housing needs. The design of the project, again, the project consists of 10 residential buildings and a community building, which is located in the first floor of one of the buildings. There's a subterranean parking structure for tenant parking, which includes tandem parking, a carport for tenant and surface guest parking, and a playground area. Here's a site plan showing the layout of the buildings and the parking lot. And here's another site plan showing the landscape concept, which shows the evergreen trees all around the perimeter of the project. The design of the building is, it is contemporary style architecture. There are five buildings I've mentioned. Five, there's 10 buildings. Five of them are two-story buildings, which include the building near Las Feliz Drive and the other five buildings are three-story buildings located at the rear and center of the site. Design features include wide vannal windows, trellis structures over the patios, and decorative railings. And all the units have private patios in compliance with the city code. Here's the elevation of the project, north and south elevation. The top one is the north elevation and that's the one facing Las Feliz Drive. And you can see in the front is the two-story buildings facing the right-of-way and then the three stories in the back, which is shown in the bottom elevation, which is the south. And it shows the three-story, which is again, that's in the center and the rear of the site. These are the east and west elevation. Again, in the east elevation, it shows the entrance to the parking structure, which is in the bottom left of that rendering. And then the west elevation, showing the buildings, which is again, the two-story in the front and the three stories at the rear side, at the rear of the site. This is a courtyard, rendering of the courtyard within the project. And this is the main entry to the project from Las Feliz Drive and it shows the details, the trellis and the balcony and the access to the units. And this is another rendering of the northwest corner of the project from Las Feliz Drive. Development standard for the project, the project complies with the residential plan development standards regarding design, parking, and height. The applicant is requesting one waiver from the development standard, which is the side yard setback reduction from 17 and a half feet to 15 feet. This is based on the height of the building. Any building that exceeds 25 feet in height, requires for each two feet in height, you need an additional six inches in setback, side yard setback. One of the buildings exceeds the height by nine feet, which is from 25 to 34 feet, which requires the additional two and a half feet in side yard setback. And that's the request to reduce that. The side yard setback on the west side is 15 feet. Staff supports the waiver because it involves a small deviation on the side. And there is 32 feet separation between the proposed building and adjacent building to the west. And that will be, again, as shown in the landscape plan, that will have evergreen trees, which add to the buffer between the two projects. The setback is not outwardly feasible, it's an interior and does not compromise public safety. And also that in the past, the city approved side yard setback reduction for Oak Creek Senior Housing on Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Many Mansion Project on Las Feliz Drive. The applicant is requesting, again, the defer of certain development impact fees and the fees include fire and police facilities, traffic mitigation, water and wastewater connection fees. These fees will be paid prior to the occupancy of the project. And again, the city council and the city in the past deferred those fees for Oak Creek Senior Housing and lately the Many Mansion Project on Hellcar Drive. The parcel map waiver, again, the site contains five parcels and they need to be merged in order to construct the proposed project. The oak tree permit request is to encroach within the protected zone of one onsite oak tree. The encroachment will allow the construction of retaining wall and driveway access. No pruning is required and the encroachment will not impact the health of the tree. Mitigated negative declaration, MND number two seventy-three, prepared for the project in accordance with SEQA. The mitigation measures are incorporated into the project design will reduce any potential significant impacts to less than significant level. And the applicant has agreed to the mitigation measures in MND number 27 as required by SEQA. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend the city council approval of MND number two seventy-three and mitigation monitoring plan, zone change application, residential plan development, parcel map waiver, oak tree permit application, and deferment of certain cities' development impact fees until occupancy of the project based on the findings and subject to the conditions in the staff report. And staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, that was a mouthful. Questions for staff? Commissioner Reynolds?
Good evening. Can you tell me again what side they're asking for a reduction in the side yard setback?
It's on the west side.
It's on the west side. So all the buildings will be that same?
Except one building in the front. It will be set back further than the rest of the building.
Okay, I see it on this. Okay, I was just, but they're, they're planting all evergreens there and that is really, the next building and the next parcel is really up against there?
No, the next building is about 16 feet from the top of the line.
Right, right. But I mean, it's the building that's closest to it, not the parking lot and whatever.
Correct.
Okay, I see. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Fisher Fisher?
Yes, uh, we received a, uh, letter from, I believe it's Peregrine Incorporated. Uh, have you had a chance to review that? I noticed, uh, the date is today's date, unfortunately.
Yes, we did. And, um, Greg Smith, myself, and Brad will, um, I can answer the planning questions, uh, the planning issues that were raised here. For number one, um, with regard to the density, and as I mentioned in my presentation, um, the project right now, the site is designated as high density residential under the general plan land use element which allows of a maximum, uh, thirty units per acre. And the zone change application, uh, which is the request for thirteen units per acre is consistent with the general plan. So there is, um, again, it's consistent with the general plan. The surrounding developments are, um, high density residential apartments and town homes. There are RPD twenties surrounding the property so with the RPD thirty, again, with the general plan designation, high density, it's consistent with the general plan designation. Number two, Brad will answer that, but let me, uh, answer the rest of planning issues. With regard to number, issue number three, um, as again, in my presentation, there is only a side yard setback reduction. There is no rear yard setback reduction. The code does not require rear yard setback for RPD zoning. It's, it's based on the Development and Planning Commission, um, a review of the project. In the past, fifteen feet was required from residential plan development apartments projects. This project provides twenty feet and twenty-eight feet set, the rear yard setbacks. So there is no waiver with regard to the rear yard setback. With that, I'll turn it to Greg to answer number four about, uh, the line of, line of sight.
I had an opportunity, uh, just prior to the, to the hearing this evening to look at the sightline that's referenced, uh, in item four here. And the, the concerns that were raised that this was an inappropriate methodology that was used to develop the sightlines for visibility from, um, Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Just as a matter of clarification, we typically don't do these type of sightline analysis, particularly in light of the fact that the closest building to Thousand Oaks Boulevard or the first nearest traveling is over five hundred feet away. The project itself is not located on Ascenic Highway's corridor. We, we don't typically conduct this kind of analysis using helium-filled balloons to begin with. We model, uh, these kinds of sightline, sightline projections using existing topographic elevations and we plot those sightlines in the same format that was presented to us in an exhibit that I reviewed this evening. So I, I don't, even if we were talking about a small error in, or relatively moderate error for that, for that fact, in terms of the actual scale of the sightline drawing and the actual height of the building at five hundred feet, uh, it clearly shows that the top of the building is screened by existing structures within Gardens of the World, including the landscaping. But even if that were not the case, at five hundred feet, if we were to have as much as ten feet of the top of one of these buildings exposed, we would typically not consider that to be a significant effect at that distance. So, um, we don't believe that this comment, uh, would create a, a condition where we would find that there would be some kind of significant environmental effect for two reasons. One, the building is not located on Ascenic Highway corridor and the distances involved are so great that this effect would be minimal at most. That concludes my, uh, response to this issue.
Mr. Down?
Uh, thank you, Chair Leon. Just to augment Mr. Smith's comments, uh, as the commission is aware, story poles are occasionally used, uh, to indicate the maximum height of a building. But according to your PPD, uh, guidelines, containing resolution two thousand and six one oh eight, those are used for single-family residences. Uh, they typically are not used for a multi-building, uh, project such as this. Uh, and in situations like this, lines, line of sight analyses are the more appropriate tool to indicate the relative, uh, location and, uh, and elevation of buildings nearby. So just wanted to add those comments and even to also mention that story poles, even for single-family residences, uh, are not mandated. They are something that the commission can request, but again, I'm not aware of, of story poles being used for multi-building projects such as this.
Thank you, sir. There are further comments from staff?
I, I just wanted to add one additional comment. When we went back to look at the sightline analysis that they had prepared here and comparing the relative scales, the vertical scale and the horizontal scale with all of the structures that are known to exist on-site, it's clear to us that the exhibits that they prepared, the applicant prepared are reasonably accurate. So I just wanted to enter that into the record as well.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any further comments from staff? Staff report?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Brad Vosel with the Public Works Department. I'm going to, uh, comment on the condition or, uh, comment, or comment number two here that he's raised. Uh, he's talking about several different, uh, conditions here and I'll just kind of briefly go over those conditions. Condition number one hundred is talking about where we ask for final grading plans, improvement plans, erosion control plans, the soils report, and the hydrology studies, and we just don't typically ask for those prior to an entitlement. A lot of these other ones are MPDS conditions and squimp conditions as far as clarifying the, the drainage. So we just don't really get into that until we issue a grading permit. Uh, two B is talking about, uh, the southwest and southeast corners of the property. Historically, the drainage does flow, it kind of, there's a ridge right through the middle of the property and it does go from the southwest to the southeast. Um, on the, on the preliminary grading plan, they do show contours at that, on the wall that he's talking about. And those contours show the drainage that's flowing away from the wall, so it's not flowing up against the wall as stated here. Uh, the, the preliminary hydrology study, they do talk about infiltration and they've stated that the soil is not, uh, able to take on extra infiltration. So that will not be part of this project. We will not be using infiltration. We'll be using other types of detention methods.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alawami?
No further comments.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Reynolds?
I don't know really who to direct this to and I don't know if it's something that we should even be hearing, but it's the deferral of certain city fees. Is that something we normally see or would even be under our purview?
The planning commission typically does not get involved in budgetary matters. Uh, that is within the purview of the city council. Uh, this came to you this evening because typically when we bring a project to the commission, as you well know, we bring the entire package so that you can see the entire, uh, picture. And I think in this case, it's still appropriate to provide a recommendation on that. You're not taking action on it, per se, but typically the commission does not get involved in, in budgetary matters.
Well then, since it is under this, can I ask, is this a typical? Does this normally happen or is this something the Area Housing Authority asks for?
The Area Housing Authority asked for this, uh, deferral of fees.
But have they in the past or is this something that happens?
Uh, perhaps Mr. Alawami can answer that.
Yes, as, as I mentioned at my presentation, there are two project, Oak Creek Senior Housing project, uh, the fees were deferred until occupancy. And the re, uh, and the same thing with many mansion project that you just heard this year, those fees deferred as well. And the reason, my understanding from the concept is, uh, in order for them to pay the fees upfront, they have to borrow, uh, they have to be part of the construction loan. And over a year of construction that will cost them money, uh, and interest for that loan, for those fees. So they rather put the money in the project upfront rather than paying the fees and then at the end, they'll be able just to get the money and pay it rather than borrow it and pay interest on it. And since it's an affordable housing project, any, anytime they can save money is good for the project.
That's why I was wanting to, because it's affordable housing project. That's typically when this is asked for?
For affordable housing project only.
Right, right.
We, as, as a policy, we don't waive, defer fees for, um, private projects. We don't do that.
Really? Okay, well, that's good because it's a benefit to them and, yeah. Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Grumey?
Um, I, I have one question. Is it city staff's position that the design of this building blends with the, um, surrounding , uh, community?
Uh, yes, it is. And we looked at development along Los Feliz Drive. There are, it's, it's a mix of development along Los Feliz Drive. It's not, doesn't have a theme, so the apartments across the street has flat roofs and that's been bought by Area Housing Authority and refurbished, so that's gonna be around for a longer period of time. And we looked up and down, not everything is consistent. You have mobile home park, um, down the street. There are newer developments. Uh, they are more for the Mediterranean, have sloped roof on them. And the precise plan of design guidelines does not dictate one design or another. It, it allows this kind of design, uh, to be contemporary, modern. So yes, in, in staff's opinion, uh, the project fits and complements the surroundings.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Commissioner Adam?
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Alawami. Condition forty-four, preservation of existing onsite trees. Well, I know we, we want to preserve one and two along the Boulevard, along Los Feliz, right? And we obviously want to preserve number four, the oak tree. I think the reports said three was gonna come out though. Is that right?
Yeah, because of the, the health of it and the, the, the grading around it, um, again, the, besides the oak tree, the other trees are not protected. However, we will work with the, with the applicant and their civil engineer and consultants to try to save those trees in place. It all depends on the final grading and how that's gonna, uh, be done, but the intent is to try to save those trees along Los Feliz Drive.
Okay. So, well, 'cause forty-four is saying the applicant shall preserve existing onsite trees, but then the tree report's saying, well, we're gonna, uh, remove three and then I hear you saying we're gonna attempt to save one and two.
Correct. Again.
Forty-four need to be rephrased?
There's, uh, street improvements required, so there's, uh, an, an underground and an overhead utility lines along Los Feliz. So we don't know what the impact of these improvements until we get the plan and how to, to, to install these. So, uh, there might, we might have to revise that condition.
I think we probably should. I mean, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm being flexible here. I understand that, you know, with the underground of the utilities and the drive, you know, we do our best to save one and two, but they are protected trees and, and, and again, three is not gonna be preserved at all, so maybe we should reword that.
Maybe we should say the applicant shall preserve to the extent possible.
Something like along those lines, yeah. Okay, well, that's one thing. And then the other is that, um, condition sixty-nine, is that, am I got the right one? Oh, yeah, underlining, oh, underlining, um, undergrounding. That, that's a, that, the applicant's totally committed to that. They understand that we're requiring that.
Correct. Because that, the, where the location of the poles will be in the right-of-way. So those poles have to be undergrounded.
Okay.
It's not feasible to move them, so, uh, there is, they will be undergrounded.
Okay, no wiggle room there. All righty. And just one other thing about tandem parking. Is that, uh, is that, is that practical? I mean, does that work? Is that awkward for the residents to have this, I see it's one space and then another one in front of it, right?
Correct. We do have projects in the city that has tandem parking. One of them is The Groves at the end of Sunset.
Yeah.
That's affordable housing. They do have tandem parking. There's some tandem parking at the Lynn Villas at the corner of Lynn and McLeod.
Okay.
So it, it's happened. And this one here, since it's an apartment, it's an apartment, uh, there's more control. You can assign, of course, the numbers. And that's, there's a condition requiring the applicant to submit a parking management plan, designating those spaces to each tenant, to each, uh, space, apartments. And the fact that, um, there is sixty covered parking spaces that are not encumbered, which means that every suite, every apartment has a covered parking space that doesn't have to be tandem.
Okay.
Which is required by code.
So we have done it in the city and other projects and it's workable, it's feasible?
Yes.
Okay. And I just have to ask, uh, under the current, uh, environmental situation, any, uh, water conservation, uh, attempts here or green building measures that are being incorporated?
Uh, the applicant can discuss that in the presentation.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mr. Alawami.
Thank you, Commissioner Adam. Further questions? Uh, I just, I just have a, a point of clarification and this goes off of Commissioner Adam's comment in regards to condition number forty-four. What I read in there, and I understand what the intent of, and, and I agree with, uh, with Commissioner Adam here. What I read in here, it says is you're not gonna take out any trees unless you get a permit to take out a tree and you're not gonna do anything until you get, uh, submit a plan. So I've seen this language before in other projects. This is, this is not unique language for a project that have come before this commission. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, we can, uh, obviously discuss this, but I, I would think now that we have that clarification, we can think about this, Commissioner Adam, and maybe before we make that change, we'll get later on into deliberation, we can deal with that. Any further questions at all? Okay, very well. Thank you. Then we'll go to our first speaker this evening. It's, uh, Mr. Tapking. Good evening, sir, and welcome. Please state your name, your city of residence, and where you bought that tie for the record, please.
The Oaks Mall, the city of Thousand Oaks. That's a simple question right there. Uh, my name is Douglas Tapking. I'm the executive director for the Area Housing Authority. Thank you for having us tonight. Peter, thank you very much for your presentation. Um, I'm pleased to introduce you again to what, what we are now calling the visit, the village, uh, at Los Feliz. Um, this is an affordable housing project and an affordable housing community that the Area Housing Authority has worked on for, uh, a period of time. For eradification, currently, the Area Housing Authority operates eight properties in the city of Thousand Oaks. Uh, one on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, Oak Creek Senior Villas, which we've worked on, we've talked about before. Sunset Villas down at the other end of town, over by the, uh, the Autumn Mall. Uh, it's an area, if you recall, had significant oak trees on it, which we worked diligently to pursue, uh, preserve, rather, and were successful in doing so. It's, uh, become quite a property. Currently, we assist approximately nine hundred families in the city of Thousand Oaks and about thirty-five hundreds in, uh, in the city of, uh, excuse me, in the county of Antura. On the eight properties that we currently administer, there are about three hundred and twenty units. That's three hundred and twenty families. Those range anywhere from senior citizens to, uh, four-bedroom apartments. The property before you tonight will have one, two, and three-bedroom units in it. It will be a family project. Uh, it is, uh, we anticipate it being a wonderful addition to the affordable housing community in the city of Thousand Oaks, and we have worked closely with staff to address various planning and, uh, community needs that are going on. A couple of the points that I'd like to make, maybe starting out quickly, um, these are going to be, for us, a very green apartment complex. We will be installing solar panels on this. That will be a first for us. We're excited to see that happen. Uh, we are going to use what are called green roofs. You may be familiar with this, you may not, this flat roof concept. Hopefully, uh, it's gonna have grass growing on it, the green kind, you know, that's about this tall. There are some certain advantages to that in, in the respect to energy efficiency. It will require some additional work. Obviously, we can't have any water incursions coming in because there will be soil on top of the roof and grass, but, uh, we will reduce our carbon footprint significantly as a result. So this is pretty exciting for us. Most of you are familiar with the Los Feliz area. It is a very eclectic street going from high-income, uh, senior housing, partial care and residential care facilities, to an affordable, very low-income mobile har, mobile home park on the street. On Old School Road, you have some of the most expensive apartments, uh, in the city of Thousand Oaks. And then at the other end, you have some of our units which are publicly subsidized as extremely low income. And, uh, they all seem to get along really well. They work closely together with our neighbors. The units will be available to families in the city of Thousand Oaks in our communities between thirty and fifty percent of the median income. Okay? So those are working families in our area. I'm sure you can imagine what those families are at this particular point. This property will have a site-specific waiting list. Now, what does that mean? Well, many of our other properties, um, which are publicly subsidized, have what we call a generalized, a community-wide waiting list. Because of the nature of funding on this, we will be using some significant tax credits, probably eleven different layers of financing on this. This property will be targeted, the waiting list will be targeted specifically to this, and we will not be taking applications until shortly before the and we will not be taking applications until shortly before the property is actually ready for occupancy. The requirements under the state and the federal funding that we get require that the waiting list be fresh, not stale, and they describe that as being thirty to sixty days old. So, we have to go through and qualify individuals on a regular basis. Whereas on our other housing programs, for instance, under Section Eight, or some of our other agency-owned waiting lists, which exceed three thousand people at this particular point, they are not, quote, "fresh." You could be on that waiting list for a number of years. We work closely with our community on this, with the City of Thousand Oaks specifically, to address both the design elements of this. You saw that tonight. It doesn't look like everything around there. It doesn't look like everything in the neighborhood, but it's not that far off. It looks really nice. It's slightly different, but not enough to, it's not something that's in the streets of San Francisco, as an example, okay? It will fit very well within our community. Bedroom sizes, excuse me, the unit sizes range from the one-bedroom at about six hundred square feet to the three-bedrooms at twelve hundred square feet. So, they will be nice-sized units. They are meant to be family units. They are meant to be available. The income, again, as we talked about, from a low of about twenty-four thousand dollars for the thirty percent income for a family of one, which is one of the nice things about this project, is that we will be able to house singles in it. Many times, we are simply unable to do that under federal guidelines and federal subsidy programs. To typically the number you look at for a family of four, at fifty percent of the median income, they would fit, obviously, a two- or three-bedroom unit, about fifty-five thousand. Now, the number of people that can go into a bedroom, a one-bedroom typically, one to two people, two-bedroom units, two to four, three-bedroom units, three to six. We expect these to be occupied by families in this area. Laundry and cable television, internet access, will be a part of this project. The conditions that are before you, the Area Housing Authority has already agreed to. We have no other conditions that we would like waived or changed or anything along the line. We will continue to work closely with staff to meet the additional needs that are required, whether it's the preservation of the trees and other issues along that line. So, we stand here to answer questions tonight, myself, my staff, our architect is here, Dowd Don from Main Street Architects, Buddy McGee, our asset manager, and myself, and we wish to thank staff for working closely with us in order to make this happen. If there are questions, I can answer at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds.
Good evening, Mr. Tapking. I have seen the new roofs, the grass, and I assume that you're-
That's what we're looking-
You weren't kidding us about that.
No, no, I'm not. I don't-
Because I have seen it in magazines, and, but I'm curious about the maintenance of it.
That's a question I'll refer you to a staff member on. I can tell you that it is done. I have seen these done also, like you. They are extremely effective. I visited some properties up in San Francisco, down by the Wharf area, that were using this green roof concept, and I went, "No, I want those on my buildings," especially if you're gonna do a flat roof concept. The amount of energy that you save is significant. I don't know what the, what the maintenance issues are. I do know that the water incursion issues, I mean, we actually are having a water incursion specialist that will be part of this architectural team to ensure that we don't get leaks, and we will be doing solar panels on this, assuming all of the energy rebates, et cetera, are still in place, but that is the plan, yeah, most definitely.
I was just concerned about, as you said, the water, the leaks, having a flat roof, that I know that a lot of the buildings would have leakage because of that, so-
Right. When I spoke to our-
It's an interesting concept. I think it's how it used to be-
We used to do it, it used to be done on a regular basis. When I spoke to the people in San Francisco, the building had been there ten years, they had had no issues at that particular point. So, that was great news. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Commissioner Grumney.
Hi, Mr. Tapking.
Good evening.
Do you have any other buildings that look like this building?
No.
What is the genesis behind the design of this building?
We looked at the, at the community on Los Feliz Drive, and we attempted to determine whether or not there was a specific character to it. There was not, there is not, in that we were concerned about simply having buildings with red tile roofs and stucco continually. If you fly over the City of Thousand Oaks and you look down on it, it's, it looks like the rug in front of you. And frankly, we didn't want to see that. We wanted to see something that the city could be proud of. We wanted something that the Area Housing Authority could stand back and say, "This is an affordable housing community that is lovely, that you would like to go into," and not just that same old stucco building. But we were looking for something a little bit different.
In looking at different areas for where you want to place affordable housing, do you take into consideration density within the community? And so, you might avoid placing a project in an area where you would have repetitive density upon, a large-density project next to a large-density project. I mean, do you look to try and balance so that the people living within the unit are not feeling like they are completely clustered together in an area of a lot of affordable housing units?
Yes. We look at all of these issues. We look at what does the community look like, how many units are on the street, what is surrounding the area, and then we also look very carefully at what is needed in the community and where the property is located. One of the exciting things about the Los Feliz site is its nearness to schools, old school, to the Thousand Oaks Boulevard, where people are employed, its access to the freeway for people to go to and from work, its ability to get to shopping in the rest of the area. We also looked at the fact that the property was available, very critical at the right price for us to deal with. The surrounding community has multifamily units, both market rate and affordable on It has, it has very high-income housing. It has some single-family units on the west end, around the bend, closest to Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and then further down, there are some condos and townhouses. So, we're not looking to over-impact an area, but we do need to maximize the use, and we're trying to attempt, we're attempting to meet the needs of the City of Thousand Oaks.
Is there some questions?
Thank you. Any further questions? Commissioner Adam.
Mr. Tapking, may I suggest to you, I really appreciate the fact that you're embracing some environmental building techniques. If the lawn doesn't happen to work out, or the grass, I should say, the lawn on your, you do have flat roofs, so look into that white sealer that people are using now.
Yeah, we're using that currently.
Yeah, inexpensive and can, it really reflects the heat, saves a lot of energy costs.
Yeah, it's, we've already seen that benefit on one of our other buildings. Actually, two of the buildings have flat roofs, and they're, they're now white.
Right, okay. And the other, just a couple of quick things, just to kind of illustrate the demand for affordable housing at Thousand Oaks, what do you anticipate the length of your waiting list will be?
Well, there are, there are sixty apartments here.
Right.
One-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. We will open a waiting list roughly two months prior to this. We expect, based upon our history, that we'll have three to five hundred applicants for that. We will go through them. Obviously, some people will be over-income, some people will not be able to afford the rents that are there. Our current waiting list for some of our other subsidized units, three thousand at this particular point, that's five years.
Wow.
That's five years. Affordable housing in the rent ranges that we're looking at on this particular property, even in today's environment, don't turn over very rapidly. The lowest rent here is going to be approximately six hundred dollars. The highest will be approximately twelve hundred dollars. Now, recognize that that's probably two years down the road. You know, we've seen some of the changes in the economy already, where rents have stabilized, incomes have gone down, mortgages have gone up and up and down. It's, it's an odd time when very low-income people will move to other areas because they can get an apartment with a swimming pool and a gymnasium at the same rate that they were paying us. But we've also seen the rents begin to, start to move up again. So, it does provide concern to us. And again, you know, we're not building this for today. It's roughly two years down the road, and I think our restrictions on this will be about forty or fifty years.
So, there'd be no lack of demand for these units, then?
Oh, no, no.
Obviously.
We will not allow these to go vacant, no.
And just the other quick question I had, I remember we had an applicant before us not too long ago, and as far as the demographics of the tenant, this particular applicant mentioned that they get a lot of single mothers with children. What is typically is the makeup of your tenants, then?
I'm gonna try to answer that in a slightly different fashion. Seventy-five to eighty percent of the residents of the Area Housing Authority's properties go to work every day. They are working families.
Yeah.
Okay? I'm not sure I could tell you tonight what the actual, whether they were, you know, all single mothers. They're not. I don't believe that. But they are, they are families. And for us, that means, in most cases, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and four-bedroom apartments. So, if it's a single mom with kids, then somebody's in a daycare program somewhere because mom's at work at that particular point. But I suspect that the majority, I'll take a wild guess, I would say the majority of our families are traditional.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Now, we'll see, we'll see some difference here because we do have the availability of one-bedroom, small one-bedroom units, six hundred square feet, and that'll be kind of nice, because many times, those other individuals, those single-parent families, where you have a small child, may not have the ability to get into another unit. We're, we're looking forward to that.
Yeah. So, you see a big demand from predominantly working families.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Tapking.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's very consistent.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Tapking. Mr. Charles Melbitts, please. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Charles Melbert. Area of residence is Agura Hills. Well, I got a lot of answers on my letter, but I have to make a few comments on that, and I'll walk right through it just number by number. First of all, item number one, the increase in density, it still causes me concern. You know, Hater mentioned that it's consistent with the surrounding area of RPD twenty units. We're going RPD thirty. I don't, I'm not so sure everybody realizes how big this building is gonna be. Correct, it's two stories on the front, Los Feliz, three stories in the back. So, I might jump around a little bit. If you, if you were to be up by the water feature outside the Cavalry Theater, you look across, you'll see Gardens of the World, and beyond that, you'll see this three-story mass building, which I don't think the design of it is in keeping with the surrounding area, but that, again, is my opinion only. I think it needs to be reviewed and seriously looked at. Item number two, I was concerned about the certified ASBIL grading, referring to August twentieth, two thousand nine grading plan. The reason I mentioned all these other public works, requirements and conditions should be included in that certified plan. The reason being, the August twentieth plan does not take any of these items into consideration, and I'm sure that all these items will affect the final grading outcome. So, I was simply asking, instead of making the August twentieth, two thousand nine grading plan, the one that would be certified, we would do the actual final grading paving and drainage plans, which would become part of their grading permit. I was glad to hear that we're not using infiltration any longer. At the last public meeting we had, the workshop, we were talking about soil infiltration. I'm glad to hear that is no longer a viable option. Number three, with your information only. Number four, the line of sight. I'm not sure on the commentary made by buildings within five hundred feet, there's certainly buildings within five hundred feet of this new structure. Line of sight, if, if you don't typically do it, then why is it a part of the package? If it's a part of the package, I feel it's important that it be accurate, and my dissertation here on the helium balloons and stuff, that is, in fact, how they were doing it. They sent up helium balloons, took pictures, and overlated on, on a Google World software. The first time I saw it, it was extremely large, and then after we commented on it, they came back with a lower and lower elevation. I simply want to be sure what the elevation actually is in the line of sight. That's basically, basically all the items I want to bring up. There's several others, but I don't see the need right now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. That concludes our speakers, I believe. Mr. Schrader, we see you in the House, you're for questions only with Mr. Don.
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment.
Okay, please go. Your turn. Good evening again to you, Mr. Schrader. Please state your name and your city of residence for the record.
Good evening, Chairman Lund, members of the Planning Commission, members of city staff. My name is Rick Schrader. I'm the president of Many Mansions. My residence is Oak Park. Many Mansions is located right here in Thousand Oaks. As you may know, we provide affordable housing and are service provider. Many Mansions strongly supports this Area Housing Authority project. This community needs more affordable housing. We were talking before about the waiting list. When Many Mansions was here in May, we had five hundred and thirty households on our waiting list looking for housing here in Thousand Oaks. As of today, we have over six hundred households on our waiting list. The numbers continue to grow. Fifty-five percent of those households have children. Ninety-nine percent are within that income range that Mr. Tapking and this project will address, that thirty to fifty percent area median income. Fifty-three percent of those households are also homeless. So, constructing sixty units of new affordable housing is necessary and needed in this community, and this project will go a long way. We need a diversity of affordable housing, but not just any housing. I think that any new affordable housing project really should address a number of concerns and a number of criteria. The housing must be of a high quality. It has to have a high-quality design. It has to be constructed in a high-quality way. Number two, the housing must enhance the neighborhood and the community. And third, the housing must be well-maintained and well-managed. On this last point, we're quite confident that the housing will be maintained, well-maintained and well-managed. Many Mansions has a very close relationship with Area Housing Authority. They have a great reputation in terms of management and maintaining their existing facilities here in Thousand Oaks and other parts of Ventura County. So, your focus really tonight is the quality of the housing, the design, the construction, and does it enhance the neighborhood? Not just, does it blend in with the neighborhood, but does it actually elevate the neighborhood? And in both grounds, I think we believe that it does. It's very high quality. It has a beautiful design, and that's very important for people that live in affordable housing. Many of our residents come from the streets, come from very substandard, terrible overcrowded housing, and it's very important for their well-being, their psychological and emotional well-being, that they live in a beautiful housing complex, one that's well-planned, well-maintained, one that's well-constructed, that's going to last a number of years, and working with the city and looking at the staff report, there's a number of conditions being placed on that project that will ensure that it's of high quality. We also believe that it enhances the neighborhood and the community. Los Feliz is definitely a neighborhood that's in transition. This project is certainly an improvement from what was there before. There wasn't any pictures of what was there before, but they were run-down, single-family homes. This is an improvement- This is an improvement of that. We like the new modern construction, the new modern design, the green design, the higher density. I think that's an important step in Los Feliz. I think overall, that's going to improve that neighborhood and the community. So in summary, we strongly support this project. We think it's a great addition to the community, and we wish the area housing authority luck. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Schrader. Questions, Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Schrader. When you say there are five hundred on the list, all of a sudden it hit me. Do you mean that there, you're looking for five hundred units, or could there maybe, is that individuals instead of?
We're looking for over five hundred units. A household is, could be one person, or it could be a family. So we actually have six hundred households on our waiting list looking for housing here in Thousand Oaks.
I was hoping you were going to say six hundred individuals.
No, it probably would represent with the families and children, well over several thousand, maybe.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions from Mr. Schrader?
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Grumney, oh, you're going to go. Commissioner Grumney wants you.
Hi. Thank you for the good work that you do for the community. The project that we approved for you not too long ago, and I'm sorry, I'm a little hazy-brained as exactly when that went. Okay, it was in May. How many units was it?
That is also sixty units.
And what is the proximity or distance this project is from that one?
It is, we, because we had actually measured that because there was some question on traffic and stuff. It's over a mile.
Okay.
Most of our project is on hill crust, and just a portion comes down onto Los Feliz. That portion is about a mile or so from this project.
Okay. And that project, along with this project, would be impacting the same school. Wouldn't that be correct?
The Caneo Elementary School, yes. The kids would go to both.
Okay.
That school.
That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grumney. Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Any further questions? Mr. Don, you for questions? It's your turn. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and your city residence for the record. You have five minutes.
Yes, my name is Dow Don, and I live right here in Thousand Oaks. And I want to thank staff and the prior speakers, Mr. Tapking, Mr. Schrader, for their prior statement. I would like to compliment their statement by saying that I'm the architectural record for the project, which means architects. And not only we are proposing green roof, and I would like to maybe use the more technical term, is vegetative roof. And by the way, we don't use grass. It is a particular type of plant that will do well in this climate, and the technology is now such that the plant materials come along with the roof. So it is an integral design that will secure the waterproofing of the roof, as well as allowing for the planting and the irrigation to be maintained easily. And this type of plant materials, they don't grow very fast, and they don't grow very tall. The maximum height is about six to eight inches, and they're going to kind of stay at that level. The additional benefit of those type of plant material is they can, in a sense, kind of restore wildlife. They can bring back butterflies and bees and birds. And this has been proven before. In fact, the green roof is just nothing new. It's like at least a few hundred years old. But in addition to the comment and discussion about design just earlier, I would like to add that the whole complex is designed around a concept of courtyard. So each and every unit has access to a courtyard and fronting on a courtyard. And they also front onto the street, so they don't turn their back, they don't turn the side to the surrounding. When you walk by, you drive by, you see windows, you see, you know, front doors. So there's a strong sense of presence, you know, kind of like the eyes onto the street type of effect. Not only that, but they have the ability to have cross-ventilation for every unit. You can open the windows on each side of the unit, and then you have cross-ventilation, so that would help decrease the reliance on air conditioning or heating. So those are the additional features that the project has. We intentionally keep the project really simple in terms of forms and shapes and materials so that we concentrate the cost onto the public features, you know, the courtyards, the planters. We want to spend more money on landscape, and so the building, we want to keep it very, very, very simple. And yet, the massing of the building is very much compatible with the context of the surrounding, two- and three-story and the most. And the two stories are placed around the perimeter so that the scale of the building is very compatible with the neighboring buildings, and it will concentrate the higher, the high mass into the inner portion of the projects. So I don't know if you have any other questions for me?
Questions of the, Mr. Don? Thank you, sir, very much. That concludes our speakers. We'll go back to staff. Mr. Alawami?
Yes, Chair. One comment, a couple comments. With regard to the view from the fountain at Cavalry Theater, our review of project is from the public right-of-way. If we got to higher vantage points, we're basically can't, a lot of projects will not be considered because you see almost everything from a higher point. So when we review project is, we look at the visual appearance or visual impact, if you want to say that, from the public right-of-way. And that's the reason why the sightline shows the view of the project from T.O. Boulevard, and that's the right-of-way. So that's just an additional clarification on that. And with regard to condition forty-four, what we could, to modify that to make it satisfactory commission is that we could state that the applicant shall preserve the existed on-site trees during the grading construction phases of the project to the extent possible, and then remove the last of the sentence. So it would not require additional separate permit in the future if those trees cannot be saved.
Any further comment? Mr. Town?
Just a quick follow-up on condition forty-four. That is a standard language that you see in the packet on page forty-five. But the change that Mr. Alawami just mentioned, I think, is appropriate. The trees that are under question are Chinese elms, they're not landmark trees, obviously not oak trees. We have a standard condition that always seeks to preserve all of the mature trees on site, and that was the origin of that condition. This slight modification, I think, clarifies it for the applicant and for staff down the road.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments by staff?
I'll turn to Greg Smith for his comment.
Mr. Smith.
Just one final confirmation. We've been sitting here while the discussion's been going on, and I've been carefully checking the vertical and horizontal scale again. We actually have four hundred and seventy feet separating the closest traveling on Thousand Oaks Boulevard to the nearest edge of the tallest building within this project. And so we're reasonably confident that this is an accurate sightline and depicts it there will be limited or no visibility from the designated scenic highway corridor. And as Mr. Alawami indicated, as you go further back into the civic arts complex, as you go up in elevation, you will see this, but you're at such a far distance, you're at over seven hundred feet. We can see buildings, tall buildings, throughout the city from this vantage point, including buildings to the east that are clearly visible. This would be no exception to that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for that clarification. Any further comments from staff? Any questions of staff? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Tapking, time for you. Rebuttal? He waves his rebuttal.
One more. One more comment. Brad, up the coaks.
I just wanted to comment on Mr. Melbert's concern on condition number twelve. Condition number twelve just states the final grading plan shall be designed with the finished pad elevations on the grading plan, as what's shown in exhibit G1, and that will be the case. The final grading permit will be based on the final plan, so I think that will take care of his concern.
Thank you, sir. Anything further? Okay, we will now close the public hearing. Go to the commission comments and their motion. Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. I was shocked when I heard the numbers. I assumed six hundred were six hundred families, not, I meant that they were, you were looking for maybe a hundred and fifty units, not realizing so many people were on the list. And I know what good the area housing authority does, along with Many Mansions, that there would be people that would not have homes if it wasn't for the organizations. And with that, I think that this does fit into the community. I think that we're always afraid when new and different architecture comes before us, and it's, to me, it's nice not to see the same old red roof. That I like the different, and I like the green concept. I think that that's a wonderful idea. I thought maybe you were going to have goats on top of the building. I know that's ridiculous, but I like the idea of the birds and the butterflies and things like that. And I think that we all, change should not frighten us, and different things shouldn't frighten us. And I think people are always, oh, we've always done it that way, so we have to continue doing it that way. And so with that, I will move approval of Z two zero zero eight dash seven zero six three one, RPD two zero zero nine dash seven zero one seven two, PMW two zero zero nine dash seven zero one seven three, and the OTP two zero zero nine dash seven zero one seven four, with the findings and conditions as in the packet and the change to condition as stated to condition number forty-four.
Would that include improving the MND also?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, very well. Comments to the motion? Commissioner Grumney?
Yes. Well, first off, I'd like to say that I strongly support the area housing authority, its missions and its goals. I think they're critical, and also thank you for Many Mansions coming down. I think this issue is highly important to our community. I believe very, very strongly in the necessity for affordable housing and to treat those individuals, all individuals of our community, with dignity. The concerns I have about this individual project, I'm concerned about the density and that we have a tendency to be looking at this one particular community and tending to cluster them. As part of that responsibility within the Caneo Valley, I think this should be blended within and not clustered together. And so I'm not entirely saying that it's that close together, but I have concerns about it. And when I saw that we had done the Many Mansions, I knew this one was coming up, and I'm going, here's more that we're doing high-density, all within the same area, and not creating a balance. And I don't believe the design of this building is consistent with the area. I think this is diverting and going into a different direction. I think, I appreciate very much the design of modern, and I do think there's a place within our community. However, bringing it in and putting that in conjunction with affordable housing, I have a little bit of some concerns that it does not meet up with the standards around, and certainly does not, I think it's a deviation from what we saw, which I thought was very beautiful with Many Mansions, that's there. So I don't think it's consistent with the neighborhood, and I think that we could do better in adding architectural elements that could blend, it doesn't mean it couldn't be modern, but could blend a little bit better and incorporate some of the surrounding communities. It's for that reason that I will not be supporting the motion. It's not that I'm not supporting affordable housing, but I do believe that we have some concerns we need to look at a little closer with the density issue and the design not being consistent with the neighborhood.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
I have a little bit different take on it. I will support the motion. On one hand, I would say, well, yeah, it's not compatible with the way the neighborhood looks right now, but I'm looking at this, this is a beautiful project, and I'm hoping that future development or redesign or additions to homes will reflect this new example, so to speak. Los Feliz is a patchwork of older homes. It's a patchwork. So I think that this new development will set the new standard there of how that neighborhood should look. With the green building designs, definitely affordable housing, we need it, sixty units, not a whole heck of a lot of units based on what's really needed out there, but it's a step in the right direction. We still have a long, long way to go to meet our affordable housing needs, but I do believe this will set the tone for the neighborhood. It's a great addition to the area, and good luck with the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Any further comments? Commissioner Adam?
Well, I might as well chime in here. The general plan calls for high-density residential. I think the zoning change is appropriate, reflects what the general plan calls for. The regional housing needs assessment is a mandate for all the cities in California, including Thousand Oaks, that we supply affordable housing units, and we have very few opportunities to meet that assessment, and this is one that's cropped up where we can. And that's important. We have an empty lot, and we don't have to impinge on any existing properties to do it. So Rena is something that we have to concern ourselves with, and this helps meet our Rena mandates. And as far as compatibility, it probably does look a little different from some of the architecture in the neighborhood, but you've got apartments to the north, you've got apartments to the west, you've got condos to the east. And I'd say, all in all, the compatibility is there, and maybe as Mr. Schrader said, it's compatible and actually enhancing at the same time. So I'm going to support the motion. You can't see it from T.O. Boulevard either, which, you know, that Gardens of the World slopes upward, so if you're standing on the Boulevard, I don't see how by any stretch you could, you'd be able to see this project. So I'm going to support the motion. I think it's, planning-wise, it's okay, and it's sociologically, we need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Adam. Further comments, Commissioner Reynolds? Please vote.
Motion passed, four to one, with Commissioner Grumney voting no.
Thank you very much. On to Community Development Department reports and referrals.
Thank you, Chair Lund. Looking forward to the next Planning Commission hearing that is scheduled for October twelfth because we don't have hearings scheduled for September twenty-eighth, so keep that on your calendar. We have two cases currently and may have one or two more as we close in on that date. And then also to direct the Planning Commission's attention to page eighty-nine of your packet, there are a number of cases that you have considered that are going to the city council or have been to the city council recently. The Vallesito Mobile Home Estates case, which the commission denied back on June twenty-ninth, was heard by the city council last week on September eighth, and based on two very recent legal decisions which had direct impacts on that case, the council granted the appeal and that subdivision of the Mobile Home Park was approved. Another smaller case that you considered, but important nonetheless, is the Walsh case, which was denied by the commission back in April. That will be heard by the city council on September twenty-second. That was obviously appealed. Also, the commission approved a wireless site at West Lycan Skelton Canyon, and that has also been appealed. The city council will be heard on October twenty-seventh. And finally, the Caneo Mobile Home Park, which the commission denied on June twenty-second. That has been appealed as well at the city council, and a date needs to be determined for that still at this time, pending resolution of existing litigation. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Do I have a motion for the minutes of July twenty-seven, two thousand nine? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move approval of the minutes of our Planning Commission meeting of July twenty-seven, two thousand nine.
Please vote.
Motion passed, five zero.
AB twelve- AB 1234 reports, by any commissioner? Thank you very much. Commission comments? I have a comment here briefly. I just wanted to thank the city staff. We are not, we are not meeting until October 12, 2009, and I wanted to let my fellow commissioners know that city staff has done a great job in discussions about consolidating and eliminating staff, or eliminating meetings when we don't have a lot of cases. And the net result to that is more efficient, more economical, saving taxpayer dollars by doing that, and want to know that that's, it's been a matter of discussion with the city staff and myself as we're planning for upcoming meetings. Commissioner Reynolds?
And that makes probably Commissioner Fisher very happy, too.
Very well. Commissioner Grumney?
Just a reminder that it is football season here in the Canejo Valley, and that we have three fine football teams, Newbury Park, Westlake, and Thousand Oaks High School. And I wanted to encourage the community to come out on Friday evenings to attend one of the football games. Your attendance, the fees that they gather, support all of the athletic programs, and a lot of people don't realize that the revenues from the football program pays for just about every coach for every other sport that's there. It's a fun evening, it's inexpensive, and it's great to come out and watch the kids.
And it's community in its finest. With that, we'll adjourn to October 12, 2009 in this chamber. Good night.